Good evening. We're gonna go ahead and get started. A couple of things real quickly before we do. If you haven't gotten coffee, there's coffee over on the table and there's also water. And as you came in, I hope you all saw the books, so I hope you all grabbed a book. If you didn't get a book, go get one. You're gonna need a workbook for this series. And we're gonna go through how we're going to structure the sessions and how the books are to be used, et cetera. So before we get started with all of those details and dive into this, let's begin with prayer. So if you open your workbook, if you open your workbook to page seven, one of the first things you'll notice at the top of each session, so Session One begins on page seven, there is an opening prayer. And so each evening, we will open with the prayer, using the prayer that's in this book for that session. So join me in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. O God of unchanging power and eternal light, look with favor on the wondrous mystery of the whole church and serenely accomplish the work of human salvation, which you planned from all eternity. May the whole world know and see that what was cast down is raised up, what had become old is made new, and all things are restored to integrity through Christ, just as by Him they came into being, who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. And this particular reading is the prayer that follows the seventh, this particular prayer, is the prayer that follows the seventh reading from Scripture during the Easter How many of you have done this Bible study before, or this series? What am I looking for? The Lexio series from Augustine Institute before with these? Is there anyone who has not? Okay. So let's go through the workbook real quickly. There is never any homework to get ready for the next session. All right? The homework follows the session you just have. Does that make sense? So in other words, we're going to go through tonight's session using this workbook. And then after that section, if you look at page 12, so Session One ends, so to speak, on page 11, with a closing prayer and further reading. But then on page 12, Session Two does not begin. Instead, there's a series of five commits. And what that means is that what you've experienced and heard in tonight's session, this material will help you commit it to your memory and understanding. So there are five days of commit. So if you think of it this way, if you've set aside some time, hopefully everyone in here has set aside time each day to spend in prayer. So you could add to that, or substitute into that prayer time, these five exercises, if you will. They are, it's content that will take you deeper into Scripture on this topic and into other documents, and give you opportunity to reflect and meditate on what you're hearing and learning. And hopefully, by the time you get through the fifth day of commit, which could be stretched out over your five days, you could do two on one day, three on the next day and be done, or you could just do one a day for five days and be done. Bottom line is, it's up to you to do them, but this isn't in preparation for the next time. So if you don't get it done, no big deal, come on in to the next series, because you're not preparing for the next time. You're simply solidifying the information you've already received. Okay? So let's look at how the evening will go. So if you back up to page seven, that's the beginning of Session One, which is what we're doing tonight. There's an opening prayer, there's an introduction. I would, if you want to have some homework to do before you come in, just read the introduction to be ready to have a sense of what we're gonna be covering. And then we're gonna start the evening. This isn't in the book, but we'll start the evening. If you have questions that have come up that didn't get addressed tonight, write them down, send them in an email to me. And next week, when we start, we will spend time going over whatever unanswered questions you have that you'd like to talk about. Then we will spend some time, as we're going to do tonight, in a short period of time for table discussion to get ready for the evening. Then we will watch a video. The videos are normally about 30 minutes or less, I think. Good news this time, at least as far as I've seen, they do have subtitles, so I'll have the subtitles up there. So if you're like me and you have trouble hearing, you can at least read. Can everyone hear me? That's the first question. Okay. So as we go through the video, you will see the outline of the video content along the left side here. You could be making notes, writing down observations, questions, insights, things you wanna remind yourself of. And then when the video is over, we will go directly into table discussion. So at least half or more of each evening is going to be spent in discussions at your table that are gonna be guided by the questions that are in this book. This is not an assignment in which you have to hit every single one of these questions. Whatever has interested you in the presentation material at your table, just work through it and talk about what you want to, as long as it's tied to the topic, right? You don't wanna talk politics or other fun stuff. We wanna try to stay focused on this evening's session. So you will see that the discussion questions that follow, there's five of them. And then we will come back after that and have some time, hopefully, for a little Q&amp;A and some comments around the room. We'll close in prayer. We will recite the memory verse, and then we will leave. So that's pretty much the flow of the evenings and the week that follows the evening. Any questions about that? Okay. All right. So tonight's topic, or this series topic, well, before I get to that, this Bible study is different from other Bible studies, so we've got a lot of different Bible studies going on right now. This is a topical Bible study. So for example, if we were doing a Bible study, say, on a book of the Bible, or on a certain genre of the Bible, if you were, so for example, we might do a Bible study sometime on the parables of Jesus. Or we might do a Bible study on the Gospel of John, or the prophets, or something like that. Those are different from this. This is what we would call a topical Bible study. The topic for all 10 of these sessions is salvation. And we will be drawing, this presentation will be drawing from a variety of books and sources within the Bible, within the library that makes up sacred Scripture, as well as pulling from tradition and other sources, sacred tradition and other sources. But a lot of the time will be spent in Scripture. So we will be going through, not a particular book of the Bible, but examining the topic of salvation all across the Scriptures. I would guess that it will be primarily focused on the New Testament, probably with an emphasis on the four evangelists, the Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. But we will be pulling from other places, too. You'll see the memory verse on page 10 is from St. Paul's Epistle to the Ephesians. We'll get back to that. So that's the structure and the context in which this Bible study is. The topic is salvation. And you will hear Dr. Barber. For those of you who were in the last time, we had Dr. Petrie. Remember, we've done several of them with Dr. Petrie. Dr. Petrie and Dr. Barber are an awful lot alike. I won't tell you which one I like better. I do have a favorite, but I will keep that to myself. He's very good, and I think you're going to enjoy this. The Tuesday Morning Group really enjoyed the presentation, got great feedback from that, so I hope it's the same here with you all. How many of you know who Dr. Peter Crayft is? Dr. Peter Crayft is a philosopher. He's a professor of philosophy and other subjects at Boston College. He is a really rock-solid Catholic, a clear, critical thinker, and an excellent teacher who can make complex topics very accessible to the people he's teaching. He does a freshman year of introduction to philosophy, once each year. And so he takes his freshman class, and he starts that class by asking this question: "If you were to die this day and find yourself before the pearly gates or the judgment seat, and the question is posed to you, 'Why should I let you in?'" What is your answer? It's a provocative question, and these 18- and 19-year-olds are expected to answer it. And they answer in class, interactive session, and they get to write down a really short answer, essay, you know, 500-word response to it. And sadly, almost never does anyone mention Jesus. These are Catholic students at a Catholic university, being taught, they are being blessed by having the opportunity to learn from Dr. Crayft. And they can't seem to find the name Jesus in the answers that they give. So they give answers that maybe many of us would give as well. They might say something like, "I'm not that bad a person. I try to be a good person. I brush my teeth twice a day, I take Jeritol if, you know, things are going well, and God's gonna let me in. I just know He is, 'cause all dogs go to heaven, right? So I'm gonna get into heaven." And the reality is, is that the answer to the question has to include, has to start with, has to be focused and centered upon Jesus Christ, the second person of the Blessed Trinity, who became man, who entered into our creation, into our world, our history, God who entered history and became man while remaining God. And He laid down His life, He suffered a passion, and He died for us. This is not just anyone dying, this is God dying. And yes, that's not a trick answer nor a question. Who died on the cross? God died on the cross. Because there's only one person in Jesus, just one. Jesus Christ is God. What is He? He is the one divine nature of God, to which has been somehow attached, a human nature. Fancy word, we call that hypostatic union. But the reality is, is that He's true God and true man, but when He died, when He ate, when He suffered, when He prayed, when He healed, when He walked, it was God doing all of that. So we have a God who not only knows about suffering, not only knows about our plight, not only knows about our struggles, He has at least experienced the pain of those struggles in His humanity. But it is the Person of God, one Person, two natures, okay? Jesus is the reason we exist. He is the reason that, pray God, we make it to heaven, that we will be there. He is the reason we come into this building and gather as a people to offer divine worship to God through Jesus by the Holy Spirit. Jesus has to be part of the answer. He is the answer. In fact, our salvation is Jesus Christ, who founded this church so that we might know Him. So we, hopefully, as we go through this series of 10 sessions, when we get to the end of it, we'll be able to answer questions like you may have been asked by strangers, friends, family, wherever, across the years of your time. Has anyone ever been asked in here? Have you been saved? Has anyone ever been asked, "What must I do to be saved?" Has anyone in here been asked, "Is Jesus Christ your personal Lord and Savior? Have you given your life over to Jesus Christ?" By the time we go through these 10 sessions, hopefully, at the end, you will have a better understanding, no matter where you are on the spectrum of that understanding right now, hopefully you'll have a better understanding of what it means to be saved, what salvation is, beyond just the ideas you'll hear, "What's it means getting to heaven?" Salvation is so much more than that. And so we'll start with this, this evening. I'm gonna tell a real quick story. Some of you have heard me tell this before, but I think it's pertinent. When I was in second grade, when I was in the summer following second grade, a long, long, long time ago, unfortunately, back in the days when rising third graders were left on their own while mom and dad went to work. So I was on my own in my house. We had moms scattered in the neighborhood to watch out and try to keep us from wreaking too much havoc. But I was home alone, looking forward to my summer by myself, first summer of freedom I ever knew. And I didn't know, I had never met, I never had any friends who were non-Catholic. Now, I knew non-Catholics because my father was Baptist, so all of his side of the family was Baptist. But everybody that I knew in my neighborhood, everybody I played with, everybody I did anything with, they were all Catholic. And into the house next door moves this family. It was a master sergeant, his wife, and a child. He was assigned to Keesler Air Force Base. And on that first day of summer, I'm kicking a kickball around the backyard, and this little boy comes across. He's a year older than I am. And he says, "Are you Mike Bickerstaff?" And I said, "I am." And he says, "Well, I'm James Meadows, and I'm going to save you from your Catholic chains." "Oh, what do you mean by that?" And he says, "Well, you're on your way to hell, 'cause I heard you're Catholic, and therefore you're earning your way, you're working your way to heaven. And that's rejecting the gospel. Therefore, I'm going to set you straight and save you." Well, it just, I didn't know what to do, so I just, I felt like just slugging him and putting him down on his back. I figured that wouldn't be a good way to get off to a relationship with this guy. So I went inside, pulled all the drapes closed, and I sat there in the dark. And I was upset. I might have shed a tear or two, waiting for the first parent, whichever parent came home first, to solve my problem for me. And it happened to be my Baptist father. And back in the day, if you're entering into a mixed marriage, today, the Catholic party has to promise to raise the kid Catholic, right? But back then, it was the non-Catholic who had to promise to raise the kid Catholic. And my father couldn't do that in good conscience unless he studied and learned, and that's what he did. He was also an engineer and a mathematician, working in technology at the time, things we take for granted now. He was working on the development of radar and Doppler effects and all this other stuff. And he had this mind that just was a gift. And so he spotted my problem, he asked me what was wrong, I spilled it all out to him, and he said, "Not a problem, Mike. You and I are gonna get through this. I will help you." And for the next eight years, my father and I did Bible study for eight years, until he died when I was 16. He did Bible study with me to equip me to be able to have loving conversations with my new best friend, and to be able to refute what he was asserting and to love him into what I knew. And so that was a blessing that just, you know, I couldn't do without it. But it was so foreign to me, and I think Dr. Barber is gonna talk about this. I'd never had that conversation with anyone. Now, granted, I was just a second grader becoming a third grader, but it wouldn't have mattered if I hadn't met James. I probably could've gone through all my teenage years and never heard that question asked. But James saw his relationship with God, the salvation that was offered, is so important that he just had to share it with whoever he met. Now, he may not have done it in the right way, but we became good friends and remained good friends until he died at an all-too-young age of 45. But I love him for having challenged me, and I love him for putting up with me. Neither one of us convinced the other to make a change, but we'll meet again one day, hopefully. Pray God. Okay. It is important for us to be able to respond when someone challenges us. And it is important that people know enough about us that they care to even enter into that conversation. So it's important, as we go through this life with our eyes set on the shores of eternity, it's important for us to understand the magnificence of this gift that God has given to us and what that obligates. There is an obligation upon us. We have a severe responsibility, having said yes to the Lord, to not hide this, as He says, under a bushel basket. If you think about the Gospel of Mercy, which is Luke, the 15th chapter, which is the chapter of mercy in the Gospel of Mercy in Luke, the parable of the lost sheep, the lost coin, and the lost sons, right? There's nothing more important than finding what is lost. And there's nothing better to do than to celebrate in a magnificent way when what is lost is found. That's gotta be a driving factor, motivation in our life, to live according to the will of God, to live out the plan that He has made for each one of us in general, but each one of us in particular as well. So what I'd like you to do is take about five minutes. We're not gonna go through all the questions at the front of this right now, but just in case you're sitting at a table and you don't know everybody at the table, spend about five minutes and introduce yourself to one another. And the other questions that are there is if anyone's ever asked you about this, and you have something you'd like to share, go ahead and do that, then we'll start the video. He made a comment that, and I think it gets to the heart of why he is talking about approaching salvation from a self-help attitude, is wrong, because it is in the sense of self-help that he's talking about. What do you do when you explore self-help? If you go get a self-help book, you're really trying to improve yourself. It's a good thing, right? We wanna improve ourselves. But we don't wanna do it without the expert, right? So as Catholics, you might say, "Well, wait a minute, I'm supposed to be practicing the virtues." You know, it's very hard if you are stuck in sin to stop sinning just by trying to stop sinning. So we have this concept that is very powerful, as long as it is done in grace, of practicing virtues. In other words, forming good habits so that we have less time for the bad habits. So we get rid of bad things by doing more good things. If we're stingy and self-centered and always looking inside, then to practice generosity is an easier way out of that narcissism than just telling yourself, "I'm not gonna be narcissistic tomorrow." So you start looking for ways to be kind and compassionate, nice and generous to other people. He's not talking about that. What he's talking about is the idea that you can practice self-help in a way that can improve you to the point that you are deserving of salvation. So we're not just trying to become better people, we're trying to become the person that God imagined us to be when He first thought of us, to conform to the image He had of us when He created us. Or said more directly, our conversion, which is ongoing, should be ordered to an outcome that says, "I'm not gonna become a better version of me, I'm going to become Christ," right? In a sense that we're conformed to His image. And we believe that in a real way. We pray at Mass. I pray when I add a little water to the chalice, to the wine, I'm praying, "By the mystery of this water and wine, may I come to share in the divinity of Jesus Christ, as He humbled Himself to share in my humanity." We are to become more God-like. I am not to become more Mike-like, I am to become more Christ-like. And the power to do that is the gospel. And we miss that word. The gospel contains power, and the gospel is Christ Himself. That is the gift that Dr. Barber's talking about. He's, the self-giving of Jesus Christ to us is then intended for us to receive and embrace so that we can give it back to Him and to those around us. It is the power of the gospel that can unleash and transform everything. I can't transform a thing, right? But by surrendering to Jesus Christ in faith, through grace, He can begin transforming me, spending time like we're doing in the Scriptures. We're encountering the risen Lord. We are encountering Jesus Christ, and with a humble and contrite heart, I would even dare say, without a humble and contrite heart, it's impossible not to be changed by that encounter. And if we're approaching Him with a humble and contrite heart, He is improving us. So it's kind of, you know, if you say that God is your co-pilot, I would suggest you change seats. God's here to draw you into Himself. He has taken up residence within you, and if you allow Him, He will remake you, as Jesus says, "I come to make all things new." So salvation is a radical thing. The grace that comes to us for our salvation is radical. He says that Jesus comes to seek and to find. We can spend a lifetime acting like, or thinking in the terms that, "I am seeking Jesus, I am looking for God," as if God is lost someplace, and it's really us who are lost. And yeah, I might be searching for my way back home, but I can't find that unless I ask God to show me the way. He is the way, the truth, and the life, not me. I wanna read just one quick thing I found. If I can find it again. No way. Shirley. Don't call me Shirley. Yes, no, that's not it. Yes, it is. Okay. We all know that the first thought, John at the cross, and so many other great saints have taught us, that the first time we think of God is actually not our doing, but God's doing. God places the thought of Himself within us, right? Here's what Augustine says. He's writing about the encounter of Jesus with the woman at the well, the Samaritan woman at the well. Clearly, she went out looking for Him. Maybe she was looking for something, I don't know. She was at the well, though, when she was there, because she didn't wanna find anybody. She was by herself in the heat of the day. And up, walking to her, comes a Jew, unheard of. On top of that, it was a male Jew, doubly unheard of. And he asked her for a drink. Here's what Augustine says. "The wonder of prayer is revealed beside the well, where we come seeking water. There, Christ comes to meet every human being. It is He who first seeks us and asks us for a drink. Jesus' thirst is asking arises from the depths of God's desire for us. Whether we realize it or not, prayer is the encounter of God's thirst with ours. God thirsts so that we might thirst for Him." So it's always God's initiative, and we need to make sure we're always, even when we're actively, proactively seeking Him, that we're doing it on His terms. We don't say to God, "This is great, but can we try it my way?" We have to do it God's way. And God founded a church to show us His way, so that when Jesus returned to the Father and sent the Holy Spirit, we might know the way and be led to all truth. So if we turn to our books on page 10, our memory verse... our memory verse for tonight is Ephesians 2:8. Let's read it together. For by grace you have been saved through faith, and this is not your own doing; it is the gift of God. And our closing prayer on the next page, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, blessed be the Lord. And let's all stand, this is a reading from the Gospels, from the Benedict 2. Blessed be the Lord, the God of Israel. He has come to His people and set them free. He has raised up for us a mighty Savior. This was the oath He swore to our Father Abraham, to set us free from the hands of our enemies, free to worship Him without fear, holy and righteous in His sight all the days of our life. In the tender compassion of our God, the dawn from on high shall break upon us, to shine on those who dwell in darkness and the shadow of death, and to guide our feet into the way of peace. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. See you next week. We will start next week promptly at seven o'clock. And we'll have more time at the end for a Q and A.